Okay, let's finish off the prayer. Um, we'll do the papers. Don, would you like to lead the prayer?
Oh, Don, Don. Is there another Don here?
No, there's not.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Laura, for this beautiful day. We appreciate the opportunity of living in this beautiful area. We ask that you guide our leaders and help them make good decisions for the entire community. And bless this meeting in Jesus' name, amen.
We'll call us being ordered at six o'clock. Roll call?
Counselor Lucero.
Here.
Counselor Padilla.
Here.
Counselor Garcia.
Here.
Counselor Redarte.
Present.
Mayor Hicks.
No, the mayor of Texas is not here. Do you want me to the Pleasantly this place?
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the United States of America. And to the world where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have approval for the agenda, the last agenda. Do you guys see anything in there?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Uh, okay. Counselor Padilla?
Yes.
Counselor Redarte?
Yes.
And Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
And apparently we had no citizens to address the council? Okay, we'll start with the discussions here. Item number one, comments or discussion on the charter. We're in compliance. Any make any motions there? No, we're good. Okay, let's see. Number two, approval of the regular city council minutes. For five eleven, two thousand twenty. Anybody say anything there?
I'll make a motion that we approve the regular city council minutes minutes for five eleven, twenty twenty.
And I'll second. Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Redarte?
Yes.
And Counselor Padilla?
Yes.
And move forward to lodgers tax funding recommendations?
So we have Scott Gray here from the Lodgers Tax Board that's prepared to answer questions and give you a brief synopsis of the board's recommendation.
Okay, if you go down, do they have the same paper?
Yes.
Is this on? Can you hear? You go down to the Grand Rodeo Association, which I think is the first one. Their funding request originally was forty-eight-five. They adjusted it down based on the timeline that we have and get our county back open and they came up with thirty-one-seven. And us just looking at it as a board, we weren't sure still that things in July are gonna happen based on the way our county's opening up right now. So we recommended them twenty-seven thousand, five hundred. But this being said, we were advised by the city manager to begin with to only give out two hundred fifty thousand dollars as a estimate for your budget. That doesn't mean throughout the year that it will change. We may have more later on in the year, but we just don't have that number yet. I think you guys get the reports back from that two months later than when they are, when they are actually taken. Do you wanna do them individually or we just go down and do the whole thing? If you have questions to ask? You wanna ask inside any of these budgets that you see or you may just keep reading them as far as the mining museum goes?
Keep reading.
The mining museum goes, they requested eight-five. Their award, we dropped ten thousand dollars off of them and went with seventy-five. And then if you drop down to the chamber, their ask this year was one thirty-five. Last year they received one fifteen. So by looking at this and just the things that have been, you know, I mean how our county's really not open right now, we dropped their budget to ninety-five. And then coming down to the Sebola Arts Council, we removed their budget by two thousand dollars to five thousand dollars from the original seven ask. And then if you come down to the Sebola Historical Society, which is the little history museum out there in Milan. His usual request is forty-five hundred. I don't think he's changed much over the last probably four or five years. And we left him at thirty-five hundred this year. The other Sebola Historical Society History Museum, their request was forty-two thousand and it was based on them needing a new HVAC unit at the old library building that they're turning into that. So inside of us looking at this as a board, they adjusted their request down because that was based on a a bid that they received and then they went and tried to find a lower bid. When they came back to the meeting when we awarded, they said, well, we only need thirty and that would probably get us to get this HVAC unit. So we had a little board discussion on that. And the reason why we got it down to ten thousand dollars is we looked at it as sort of a heads and beds thing. I mean, I know that the city now owns that building and has to figure out what you guys want to do with that building. But we went, are we really getting people here to stay the night and get us back lodgers tax by going to the history museum that's not open yet? So we dropped theirs down to the ten on the idea that if in later in the, in the year, we start bringing in more lodgers tax than we estimated, we would have a second ask maybe right before fall when Laura may have a better gauge of what we're actually bringing in. And then that would be something that if it was a priority to you guys to have that fixed through lodgers tax funding, we would look at funding the rest of it later on in the year. So then coming down to the Winter, Mount Taylor Winter Quad Grathalon and the Sebola Trail Alliance, which they're both asked by the same group of people, we kind of feel like during the fall and with the social distancing of like bike riding, we're pretty sure that they're gonna have those advanced by the time we get to fall. So that, you know, and that thought, we're like, we need them to have their funding to advertise because they'll have to start advertising towards the mid to end of summer to get their contestants to come. So we're like, yeah, we're pretty sure that one will probably happen. And moving down to the last request, the American Legion Riders, they had a request of twelve thousand dollars. Inside of that budget, and I don't know if you have it with you, they were trying to buy like a mechanical pole to do their bikers' bully event. Well, the bikers' bully event usually takes place in the I think it's the second to third week in July. It was kind of same time around that the bike rally used to be. But again, we kind of went, it's, you know, was it a two-day event? Is it putting heads in beds and do we really wanna fund a bowl or are they even gonna have this event? And at the time, they were trying to postpone it to do it at a later date. So we, we adjusted their budget down to four thousand dollars. That total does come out to the two hundred fifty thousand dollars that Laura recommended.
Any questions?
Now Laura, is that, does that reflect the great overall?
Um, no. So this is a different pot of funding. So we, we looked at what we brought in, what we've brought in so far. Typically, we bring in about three hundred and fifty thousand. We're down about a hundred thousand at this point. So I, I allocated about a hundred thousand less. So we looked at actual dollars coming in rather than the thirty percent cut. So it is cut by quite a bit. It's down a hundred thousand.
Now, if there's some additional lodgers tax money that comes in, some of these can be changed?
Yes.
Down, down the road?
Yes. We could do another request and, and put more money out.
But also, I mean, I don't know if you guys, how you use the funding. Like if it doesn't get spent from the previous year, does it go back into that batch for this upcoming year?
So not necessarily because the money that we allocate out is based on projections. So it's not actual money in the bank necessarily. It's what we projected would be coming in to budget out. So if we don't bring in that amount or if we bring in more, then there's more money available, but it gets carried over if there is money left.
But that'll be the one we were talking about. You wouldn't actually know the full true last quarter figure till like September, right? Because it reports two months after the final.
Well, we'll know by June thirty because we actually receive the money and they have to pay their lodgers by June thir- twenty-fifth. So we'll know by then.
To close out their, their fiscal, their fiscal too.
Yes.
Any other questions? So these, these cuts, are they like a percentage across the board or is it just based on?
They're, they're not a percentage, but we cut the allocation by a hundred thousand based on what we're bringing in. So then the lodgers board looked at the request and decided how much they, of that two hundred and fifty, they thought each group should be allocated.
And a lot of them are based on the timeframe that their events happen. Like most of these events that happen, happened in the summer months. The Chamber used to have a fall event that they weren't sure they were even gonna do this year. But some, most of them were coming up so soon that we're going, how are we gonna have that many people on one space right now? It's not gonna be open. So if, if we're going, why would we fund that when we don't think it's gonna happen? And that's why I went back. If money came available later in the year based on for budgets, they could come and have a second ask or whatever might be in there if it is more than what we are projecting.
So do we need to approve this?
Yes, I have a question. Where about the Grand Main Street, they, they show up?
Well, so they didn't get a packet in on the timeframe. So we went, what can we fund them when they didn't have a packet in under the guidelines to ask for funds? So that's one of those ones where we said, you know, you missed the deadline. If there was something that became available and they had somebody that was ready to do Main Street, they would have to turn around and come ask you for funding instead of us because they would miss the, the deadline on this.
We still don't have a director?
I don't believe so. I think they have, had or have an interim temporarily. They do have a board of directors.
Does it have like a vice chair or something that they can hold? I, I don't know.
Well, she tried to, okay, the lady showed up on the day of our recommendations going, hey, we have a packet. But the deadline for that packet was way earlier than the day that we did the awards. But it, I don't know if it just skipped their mind. They didn't see that it was, it needed to be turned in or they didn't really have a plan or an event for this year because typically their main event was a geocache event that also fell in July, I believe. So maybe they were looking at it the same way we were, that they didn't think it was gonna happen. I don't know. I don't know who dropped the ball there, but they didn't have a packet in.
Were we, uh, taking up, combining that with something else so we can have some kind of events? Yeah, like, was taking over or something? So we can have some kind of event like, first of July's coming around the corner? I know we're social distancing, but I know we're gonna have a parade or not. Any kind of event, yeah, like?
Well, the Chamber spoke of the parade, but due to the social distancing rules, they didn't know. They were even almost considering doing a virtual parade. They didn't know how we could do that. And then they went, if we did do a virtual parade, how are we gonna stop people from showing up at where we're gonna build it? So it was kind of a, I'm not sure they have a plan to do it right now.
So we don't have any, any, have to read
I think today, um, it sounded like she did a press conference and from what I heard, she's opening even Sebel County back up, um, as far as restaurants, twenty-five percent or, I'm not sure, but there is some opening up coming up right now
What's the date?
For businesses. I'm not sure. Um, it might be immediately, I thought. Someone, did you get to see it, Chris?
June first.
June first.
It's, it's phase one, isn't it? Basically, we're going to a phase one of opening, right?
Right.
We're gonna just stop at a phase one, I think.
Yeah, the rest of the state, aside from McKinley and, and Sebola and Santa Juan were where they were in the preliminary, uh, stage where others were in the first stage.
Then you'd need, you'd need the numbers and the distancing for the parade. I mean, I know it's spread out over space, but how do we decide how many people can be on, on the street, you know, for a parade?
This lady in the game?
I got, I got another question for you, Laura. Um, now, this particular item that we're discussing, is it something that, that we have to address tonight, make a decision on? Or is it something that, uh, maybe we could revisit another month down the road and see if there's any adjustments that needs to take place or?
Um, yes, you could table and think about it and come up, you know, with a different proposal or get some more information. You definitely, we have some time. We could do it the first meeting in June.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is time is going by fast. And if we don't make some kind of decision as soon as we can, what we're gonna lose out. People might do something like we they, you know, I'm with you. I know where you're coming from. If we table this and table that, you gotta need it when we make a decision. You know, because we're going backwards if we don't make a decision, I think.
So that, does that, that would affect the planning of, uh, events if we, let's say, we held it back another month? And the, uh, these organizations, it, it would affect their, their, their planning for last form?
It, it could possibly. I think the only one that has an event coming up right away would be the rodeo association.
Or the Chamber if there was a parade, but in, in your, in my mind, you go, how much money do they have left now? Because with this money is from the start of July first, right? The parade actually happens on the fourth. So to me, most of their planning legwork would probably have to be done before the first.
Besides, they don't have a director either.
I don't know, I don't know how they use that money inside of their budget. Like if they use this for that parade on the fourth or they use the money from the year before. You know, I don't know. That might be something that you could ask the Chamber Director because I don't, if you do the number, the number they asked for to put on the parade and it didn't have the Fall Chili Fiesta in there, but it was supposed to be in there, are eight thousand dollars. And part of that money is the traffic control plan for, from the DOT. When you use Santa Fe and you use, uh, First Street, they have to have a traffic control plan, which they have to pay for. And I don't know how long it takes them to get approved, but that has to be done before they even consider doing a parade, from what we were told from the Chamber. Kind of like how the quad puts it for theirs.
My, my question is for the parade, the Fall Fiesta, does that really bring in heads and beds?
So we're mixed on that. Our board kind of gets a little split on our ideas of heads and beds. And the reason why that board is broken up between hoteliers and business owners and and that large person is because you kind of also want your city to be well-rounded. When you, once you get people here, there's more things for them to do than just what, you know, something that keeps them here. That's kind of why we keep looking at like the museum and things that, once they hit town, you wanna keep them here long enough. You know you're gonna get grocery receipts out of them if they come and see and visit these things. They'll buy gas, they'll buy food, they'll buy whatever. But we're always, we do look at heads and beds for like main events to try to figure out who are we getting? But once you have them here, you kind of wanna have things to keep them busy though.
But the taxes for the lodger's tax comes from hotels, correct? Not from the grocery receipts tax from the gas station?
No.
So you're giving them money.
Oh, no, we've talked about this in many different ways.
It's just, it's, 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 I understand the grocery receipts tax and I understand to get people here grants, but my thing is you're giving them seventy-five, ninety-five thousand dollars. What, I mean, I, it's, this, the, the parade is cool. Locally, it's the best thing I, you know, it's, it's a great parade. Fall Fiesta, we're working on it. But at the end of the day, it's, you're giving them money from the lodger's tax to do.
And inside of these two budgets, uh, we had a pretty extensive conversation during our last meeting because all of these organizations, other than the Chamber and the Mining Museum, Chamber and the Mining Museum are the only two that have administrative fees in them. So we pay their employees. All the rest of these organizations are all volunteers. They put on these events voluntarily. So I had spoke with Laura at one time of how it used to work when she was at Future Foundations. How did you decide what administrative fees were based on your total budget? It's usually a percentage. So if you went back to say the Mining Museum, out of their original eighty-five thousand dollar ask, forty thousand dollars of that budget is administrative fees. So that's, you know, you're just, you're just under fifty percent of that budget. On the opposite side, the Chamber side, you have your, uh, ninety-five thousand dollars and I believe it's like fifteen thousand, six hundred dollars administrative fees. So between that fifty, what do we got, fifty-five thousand, six hundred, it's split between two employees at the Chamber. That's, I mean, we asked that question trying to find out, you know, what, what are we, what are you paying for? Like what? And yes, they promote the city, they try to keep people here. So we look at their budget based on what they use it for inside of each budget. But that's just how it was laid out. So we go, well, we'll go with the cuts and, and see if that's approval or if you guys wanna change it. Totally up to you.
No, I, I, I understand. I, I this is, uh, something that we need to work on big time because a lot of this stuff in here, I mean, it's cool, but around Main Street or the Chamber, um, as far as what the roles that they actually supposed to be playing. I think we've gotten to a point where we're just hanging it out and we're just, we go with the motions, we give them money, same thing every year and year and, year in, year out. Other than, I do know the Grand Rodeo Association, we got a grant, I guess, at some point in time to do a covered rodeo thing, which that's gonna bring in heads and beds. That's something good for their community. Um, so that's gonna be something good, you know, but everything else, you know, it's, we, we need to it just doesn't feel right that you're paying so much money to the Chamber and that's not what they're supposed to be doing. The Chamber's supposed to be local businesses.
Well, that's, that's the other thing. We talked about the advertising and what's useful and what gets them here. So when we came back to the Chamber side of their budget, not the Mining Museum side, inside of that budget, sixty-six thousand dollars of that budget is used for ten billboards across the I forty.
Okay, raise your hand if you, you recognize a billboard? Does anybody recognize a billboard that you see on highway? Are they faded? Are they good?
They're still there. I've seen a few of them, yeah. They're still there.
And I think, is that to redo the skins every year or is that just for the rail space?
I think it's for the rental.
I think that they also design, I think the company that leases out the billboards, I'm told that they also do the, the design for the billboards.
I think we all have, I don't know, billboards, something flashing lights, something like that. Are they lit or not? Can you notice it completely?
Well, I do know the one you have that advertises your drive-through right here on the other side of this building. A lot of people come off the highway to do that. Now, how we can find out if they're seeing it on a billboard or they're seeing it on the internet? I'm not sure how we can figure that out to get those true numbers.
Coming into the city on that end that advertises this?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think I've seen that.
They used to have one for the golf course. Every year they come up with, I think, a new theme, right? A new advert, they have an advertising committee on the Chamber that decides what it is they wanna promote for the city of Grants. For tourism. And you guys currently have a tourism person working in the city. We used to always ask this question because there used to be three organizations kind of doing the same thing. At Main Street, you had the Chamber. Now you have your own, your own tourism person. So they're all kind of asking for money to do the same thing.
The one item here, the Mount David Winter Quagmire Club, that, that's a very good organization right there. I think people come in the night before and see the day, do something.
Yeah, that's always a good drill.
Yes.
That, I mean, the events and stuff like that, I guess, I mean, we have to figure out when and how we can have an event like every quarter. First quarter is the quad, second quarter is maybe the geocaching, third and fourth quarter as well. Gotta figure out something to start to bring more people in. I mean, the, the trail lines is cool. They're trying, but you know, everything takes baby steps.
Well, the overnight stuff, like I said, when you're looking for two-day events, there's not a lot of them. I mean, you have your, your quad where you said they come in the night before. Uh, rodeos, typically they'll do one or two-day things. After that, you know, after that, I don't think people, unless they're from here, stay overnight for the Fourth of July. I don't think unless they're from here, they stay overnight with the Fall Chili Fiesta. Depending on how you view what you want this lodger's tax to do for you.
Well, I, I know whatever's going on, you guys have the regulations, you have a board. I mean, I, I, I make a motion that we approve whatever you decided to give them. And, but at the end of the day, we're gonna start to look into all these little organizations to try to improve grants. That's what we wanna do. We don't try to do something different. It's always gonna be the same. We haven't grown in thirty years. So as collectively, as all these groups and as a team, how can we get better? So I, the board, the Chamber, uh, the Councilman here, we have to figure out, okay, and, and ask questions. What's gonna better grants? What's organization is gonna step up and what are they gonna do? Like you said, we might be doing all three different things. You know, I've seen Chris and she's done a lot of good things with our websites and this and that. Uh, but collectively, we all just gotta work together. So at the end of the day, you have a board. Um, there's stuff on here that I have questions, but maybe we not gonna fly off the handle right now and say you're gonna start cutting everybody and I don't know the whole story. So I mean, I make a motion to accept the lodger's tax funding. That's what it's twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one.
For two hundred and fifty thousand?
For two hundred and fifty thousand.
Your second?
I'll second.
Okay. Time for Padilla?
Yes.
Counselor Redarte?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Perhaps, um, you know, these entities can come in like every quarter, you know, or and give us maybe a breakdown of what they're working on.
Yeah, I mean, it would be easier to say, okay, you have this organization, hey, we're, come July, we're really working hard by advertising. Give us the good feeling that, hey, you guys are working really hard for the community or this and that. So when they come and you guys ask for money, it's like, hey, man, they, they, those guys worked pretty hard. You know, these guys work pretty hard. I'm not saying none of what he does, but we just transparency and let us be informed of what's going on. It's, it's gonna help us to make a better decision when you do come for these, you know, the money.
I agree with you there, Eric. As an economic development person, at least once a month, come and give us a report.
That's something we can set up?
We can. Um, we'll have to get the mayor to put it on the agenda.
Okay.
But yes, we can.
I see that's something that we can involve with, with, uh, Mayor Hicks? Or is that something that?
Yes, I think you let him know that would be your wish.
I'm on that board this morning, Laura. I can report on that.
Okay. Okay, let's move to item four, grants flyer and resume and report.
Good evening, Mayor Portem, councilors, city manager, staff and very audience here.
What's up, Mr. Chief?
Been trying to get to do this since, uh, January-ish and a lot of things have happened between then and now. So I'm very happy to come before you and tell you just a synopsis of what we did in twenty nineteen. You all have a nice little printout. I put mine in the book because it sits in the office because everybody asks me questions all during the year. What'd you do last year? So we remind them. In twenty eighteen, we found out that we were underreporting for whatever reason. So we get schooled. So we get schooled by the, uh, State Fire March Office on how to do our, our reports, we have EMS reports and fire reports, so we had two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-six runs in twenty nineteen. A lot of runs, a lot of things that people ask us to do, it's, it's quite unbelievable, but every one of them gets a report generated for them. Um, couple, couple of highlights, that we bought a new rescue unit, which is a big rescue four, the big red one that sits in Bay Four, to help folks that get trapped in vehicles and what have you, with all our the toys we've purchased over time, that make it quick and efficient to get those folks out. And in twenty nineteen, we ordered a new fire truck, and it didn't come in in twenty nineteen, it came in twenty twenty in January, and that's the engine six that you see part sometimes out here at Station Two, uh, to help with our ISO rating for the city itself. Um, just, just, just a synopsis here, we lost fifty-eight firefighters last year, for one reason or another, uh, hardtacks, accidents, training, what have you. And sorry to say that to date, we've lost twelve firefighters to COVID-nineteen, on top of all those others that we've lost. So that, that in itself is something we'll reflect at the end of the year, because, uh, those folks just went to work just like anybody else, and contracted a virus, and they're no longer with us. So if you have any questions, uh, what happened, answer them, um, I know that, that the, the report is electronic, you also have a paper one, hopefully, but, uh, it's got a lot of information with regards to what, what your fire department does, so, have a feeling, any questions you'd like?
Any questions, guys?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to give you some feedback, you know, a lot, a lot of times I hear the fire department, you know, if someone in, in the, the community says, oh, you know, the fire department helped me, so, at the end of the day, it's always positive, it's always, these guys are treating us with respect, they're fast, they're handy, and you guys, you guys are heroes. So I just want to say thank you, to all you and your whole staff.
Appreciate that, I, 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 I reflect the same sentiment, the, uh, twelve to fifteen folks that I have, depending on the day, are all heroes when it comes to what needs to get done. Recently, we've had a downturn in EMS calls, but an upturn in fire calls, I don't know what's going on, all kinds of things are burning out, out in the, out in the community, it's just everywhere. It's not vehicles, it's grass, it's sheds, it's houses, I have no idea what's going on. Trying to educate some of our folks with regards to, uh, uh, fire starting programs and, 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 and fire education, and I don't know what is going on, but we'll be out there, you know. It's just, uh, it's never a dull moment.
Chief, let me ask you a question, uh, are you, um, are you fully staffed, got, all the, all the?
Yes, I have nine, uh, nine commissioned firefighters, yes, I do.
I want to kind of echo what, uh, Councilor Eric says, uh, your firemen are very, very professional when they do their job, very professional, they they're very courteous to the public, and it's a good testament to, to the fire department, thank you, thank you.
Throw that into them, every time we have staff meetings, or I see them, and literally throw that into them, as in, you're not here for you, you're here for your community, period, that's, that's why you're here.
Yeah, I've met a few of your, your guys and your crew, so, uh, they're, they're very good at what they do, and again, tell them all thanks for what they do.
Thank you, Robert, uh, I know who's those guys, and, uh, like last weekend, holiday, here I'm going to the altar hall, the, the guys working, delivering their families. You know, I know that's part of the job, but I want to thank them, and you as well.
Appreciate that, I'll, I'll echo your sentiments exactly.
I'd like to point out that the firefighters really use their off-time very productively, and they do a lot around the station, and if you are around here, you'll see they're always cleaning and fixing things, they remodeled the inside of the the fire department over here, and redid the floors and the counters themselves, and I believe they're very proud, but it saved the city a lot of money, and was good use of time, and so I see that quite frequently where they're being very productive during the downtime. And one thing I wanted to point out that I learned when I came on, I always heard the complaint from my dad, why do so many, uh, why do so many vehicles have to go to a call, you know, there's the ambulance, the fire truck, the police car, and so that was my question when I came on, but I've learned that many times the calls that they get are not what people say they are, so they might say, well, we have an elderly lady that fell down, and when the firefighters get there, they may find that it's a domestic violence situation, where grandma got thrown out of the car, or, you know, they need police assistance, or somebody has a knife, and it's not always safe. So, um, it's important that they have backup with them when they go to a call, it's not always what comes across on dispatch, so.
Some days, it's, like I said, it's a never, never-ending challenge when we, when we go to any call, and, uh, we protect the, the police officers that they do as well to us, so it's a team effort every time we go to a call, because right now, I'm listening to three calls simultaneously going on in town. They may sit and, uh, do things at the station, but you never know, we've got three calls running simultaneous as, as we're standing here. Well, thank you, sir. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Robert.
Okay, next, uh, resolution twenty sixteen seventy-eight, budget adjustment request.
Good evening, council, um, this is a budget adjustment request, so, um, this one, I think I've learned everything I need to know for DFA, they throw something else at me. And we have to, um, not only present a resolution when we go over budget for expenditures, but we also have to present a resolution when we go over budget for revenue. And so this is just real simple, our, our budget, uh, we budgeted eighty-five hundred dollars for, um, the EMS fund, emergency medical services for this year, fiscal year twenty, and we got eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars. So this is simply a resolution saying that the revenue is increased from eighty-five hundred to eighty-eight twenty-four.
Okay, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion for the approval?
Let me ask you a quick question, okay?
Yes, sir.
You said you asked for eighty-five hundred, and you got eighty-eight, is that what you're saying?
We budgeted eighty-five hundred, um, actually, chief's probably, he left. So, um, the EMS comes under the fire, not under, but chief is also in charge of that, so they project, we project what we're going to get this next year, and we projected too low, it was, it was eighty-eight twenty-four, and we projected we were gonna get eighty-five hundred, because we're not, we don't really know until after the budget's already submitted, what the exact number is. Um, it'll be the same thing with the fire protection fund, um, he's projecting what we're gonna have this next year, but we don't get that information until after the budget's finalized.
So is this a good thing?
Oh, it is a good thing, yeah, it's three-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars extra, yeah, it is a good thing, it is a good thing. Yes, anytime we get extra money, it's a good thing.
I think we can afford that, right?
Right.
Well, if it's three dollars or three hundred.
That's right, that's right.
So, thank you, Kim.
So I just need your approval on this, please.
Make a motion?
I make a motion, we approve, specifically, say, twenty-nine-six seventy.
Okay, I'll second.
Councilor, uh, Precia?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Pedia?
Yes.
And Councilor Darkton?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kim. The next item, Second Street Canal Pedestrian Bridge. I understand that
We have problems.
We have problems with this bid, due to the over budget, or over bid, uh, by a few dollars, so.
And we have Donnie here with Wilson and Company that will go over the bid with you.
Good evening, good evening, councilors, um, Ms. Manager. Yeah, so we opened bids, um, two days ago on Tuesday, um, and we had four bids, chemo, constructors, uh, TLC, plumbing and utility, Compass, and, um, engineering and construction, and Vital Consulting Group. And, and, and as you mentioned, the, the bids did, did come in high, um, our engineer's estimate, um, I'm just gonna read the, the, we, we have a bid alternative. Oh. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I'm done with it.
I, I held on to all, uh, to, to all the, uh, handouts.
Thank you.
So, you'll see on there that, um, uh, our engineer's estimate on the far right, the base bid plus add-all, uh, with New Mexico grocery receipts tax, our engineer's estimate was two-seventy-three, and the bids came in, the, the lowest was, uh, was four-hundred-and-forty. We looked, basically, all the, all the items came out higher, um, because we, we were hoping and thinking that both of these projects, Washington and, and the Second Street Ped Bridge, we'd get good costs for, you know, contract, one contractor getting both jobs. That basically didn't turn out to be the case, um, on this one. But what, uh, what the letter of recommendation says is, is to, uh, to reject all bids, that, that's what Wilson is recommending, to reject all bids. And what we want to do is make some adjustments, uh, and we'll, we'll do whatever it takes to, to, to get within budget, um, even if we, we have a monument sign for, um, you know, that we, that we wanted to include with the project, um, and, and the bid was about thirty-nine thousand for the monument sign, so you know, there's, there's, maybe we take the monument sign out, there's some other items in there that I, I've already looked at, or, you know, we can make a design adjustment, save probably fifty grand, just from what I've looked at. But we still need more, so there's some work that Wilson can do to, to, uh, to help lower the cost, and then the, the plan would be to then go through a CES contract and get it, we could get it administered, um, pretty quickly, um, um, you know, after making a few adjustments, um, uh, to get the project built.
Wasn't this steel bridge supposed to be prefabbed, like, now we could get that, how is it?
Yes, it's, it's a prefabbed, uh, truss structure bridge.
Is that what these guys are calling it, too?
Uh, yeah, and that, and that's what the bid, and, and that's another thing that gave it higher than, than what we anticipated was the steel structure bridge, um. But, you know, we still want to have that, that steel structure, so we want to make some other adjustments to the design to, to make it work, but yes, it's gonna be a, uh, a bridge, not a Fox Culvert like the other entrances to the school, uh, this will be a bridge, a, a pedestrian bridge, so it'll have abutments and a nice, uh, steel bridge crossing.
And you, comparing your, your estimate to theirs, what, any, any shady things, any, out of the ordinary?
Uh, uh, almost all the items were above our estimate, and I, and I, uh, you know, our estimate was, was built thinking that we would get some savings, because we bid both of the projects at the same time. But just all the costs were, were higher than, uh, you know, so basically the contractors, it doesn't look like they they bid the, the, both, both projects as if they would win on both, if that makes sense, and, and the, the pedestrian bridge is a smaller project, so economy's a scale, your your unit costs for everything's gonna be a little higher, and so, I mean, but that's, that's what I noticed looking at the, the big tab, is basically all the items are, are higher than what, uh, than what we anticipated, and, uh, uh, but, like, you know, like I said, I think there's, there's a few items in there we can, uh, uh, eliminate, like, we had a we were, we were building some of the concrete by the channel, um, and doing some grading, and, and with that, we needed, we needed to de-water. And so those are a couple of the items that we could eliminate, and that's why I was saying, maybe about, about fifty thousand dollars if we don't, uh, worry about the de-watering. Uh, the bridge of the, the abutments are gonna be above the water table, so we don't, we don't necessarily have to do that, so if we just eliminate the grading of the channel down below, we don't have to touch the groundwater. And so there's, there's adjustments like that that we can do, um, to, to re-bid it and, and make it work.
And that's a process of thirty days, sixty days, what is it?
Um, I, I'd say we can, because the CES process, I mean, you can, we can give them a week to, to, to put a bid together, um, you know, may, uh, and, and then to get the, uh, the design, you know, I'd say in thirty days, we can get it done, we, we can get it back out, and, uh, and, and probably have bids, yeah, in, in a month, I'd say, we, we, that's something that we'll, we'll definitely shoot for, is to get it, get it out and award it um, in a month, so that we have a contractor on board.
So we're looking at, at least a, a hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars, right, for the lowest bid?
It was about a hundred-and-fifty.
Around there, right?
About a hundred-and-fifty, um.
Is that what we're looking for, as far as cutting, is that what you're saying?
Uh, I, I think, um, you know, we'll, we'll aim for that number, about a hundred-and-fifty, I, uh, and if we, like I said, if we remove, remove the monument sign and, and do some of these other adjustments, like you know, like, we can get pretty close, and we'll definitely run ideas by Don and, 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 uh, and others to make sure, uh, you guys are good with the adjustments that we, that we make, but, but in the end, we want to have a bridge there, we, we actually added some colored, uh, concrete, um, patterned concrete, uh, for, for the bridge itself. Maybe we just go with, uh, gray concrete, that, that was actually really a lot more expensive than I, than what I was thinking. Um, and, uh, you know, the, the adjustments like that, but we'll still have abutments and, and a ridge crossing there.
Yeah, they're well over your, your estimate, that's, that's quite admitted.
Yeah, yeah.
I could say it was fairly close, but it looks like now these guys, these companies are not the business.
It was, it was surprising to see these bids, actually, um, and, um, yeah, I mean, I, I, um, uh, you know, if, if we, um, you know, cancel the bids or, or reject all bids, we can talk to the contractors and, and, and get ideas, you know, if, if we do, uh, reject the bids, then we can then we can ask, um, you know, what their thoughts are, why these bids were high.
Does, does it go out for bid again?
Um, what, what our, what Wilson is suggesting is to go out to CES bids, so we can, we, uh, we control, we, we can pick a few contractors. Preferably, you know, like, AUI is already out here.
No, that's a different direction, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's still, it's still sending it out for bid, we're giving the contractors a bid form, it's just a different procurement process, um, through CES. You don't have to, uh, advertise and, uh, and bid it for as long, uh, CES, you can go directly to the contractor and say, hey, uh, can we get a, a bid on this project? And, and do that for, say, three contractors, and, and, and see what comes back.
Like you say, AUI is over here, you just can't, you can, you can save some money with mobilization.
Correct, that, that would be the hope, and then, um, Compass, uh, on, for the next item, Washington, Compass was a little there, so, you know, it makes sense to, and then someone's out in Milan doing some work, uh, but, but we'll get contractors that, that work here locally.
Walter McBride.
And, uh, and, you know, that are already here, so that, to save on those mobilization costs.
They're charging, they're charging, uh, mobilization, they're charging twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, the, the mobilization was, yeah, for, if you're, if you're working on both jobs, that, that mobilization number is, is really high.
I'd like to ask Donald a question, Donald? Now, if we, we reject this right, tonight, okay, then, uh, then you go a whole different direction in order to see if we can procure the, the correct, uh, the correct, what we need, two-hundred-and-seventy-three, to do what it is that we want to do, right?
Yeah, the, um, the funding agreements are about two-ninety, we've already awarded construction management for thirty-five, something like that, so subtract that. So we only have about two-hundred-and-sixty, two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand available for construction, currently funding agreements, now there are times they go over and the city is, uh, has enough in the general fund to where we'll make up the difference, but given the situation that we're in, we don't, we don't want to even consider that. So we want the bids to be two-seventy or less, and we, we will try this CES process, because we don't want to go over the funding that we have available for the project.
Okay.
Yeah, so what we want to do is we want a motion for rejection of all these bids.
Do you want to add something, Dan?
Well, I was gonna just say that the way we bid them, we were hoping to get two-low bids, but it looks like the contractors thought, well, this is the low project, so I'm gonna go high on this one. And this is the bigger project, and they went low, so you'll find out with the Washington Bridge, it's significantly lower, so, anyway.
Thank you, thank you, Donald. I make a motion that we reject this, uh, Second Street, uh, Channel Pedestrian Bridge construction award.
I say that.
Uh, Councilor Precia?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Pedia?
Yes.
And Councilor Darkton?
Yes.
And rejected. So this will go back out for bid, how soon will that go out?
They'll make the adjustments in about five minutes.
Okay, next item, Washington Avenue Bridge, construction work.
Okay, so we got, this one is the better news, um, so looking, looking at the, uh, the, the bids here, um, with grocery receipts tax, you'll see them range from about one-point-one to you'll see a range from about one point one to uh one point six, one one point seven million um for the bids. And and the uh our engineer's estimate was one point three five million. And so Compass Engineering had the uh had the low bid at at one million, one hundred and thirty-three thousand twenty-five dollars and sixty-six cents. Um that's that's with gross receipts tax. Um and 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 with with that, yeah, we recommend that the bid scheme is good. Uh we recommend award uh to Compass Engineering and Construction for for that amount.
Where are these guys from?
Uh they're out of Albuquerque.
It's the first order of our.
Um I I've worked with them before, and they're they're really good workers.
So this guy, this guy that are already there in Jefferson, did he bid?
Uh that's AUI.
Did he bid?
Uh they actually did not, they did not. Um they must have been uh busy, but they they were on the plan holders, and they were asking questions, but then just didn't bid.
I would imagine they would have, cause that's a good outfit, I think, yeah.
Yeah, AUI is good.
Kimo, I worked with Kimo before, when I was an inspector.
Donald, who did the George Handish Bridge? Was it AUI or Compass?
Compass, oh, correct.
Hey, Donald, do you have an extra uh came from the the Second Street Channel?
Oh. Donald?
That's what I got too.
Oh, did I?
Me too.
Who's gonna make you?
I thought I'm gonna shut up, cause I really don't wanna.
Uh do you anticipate any uh any change orders on that?
We we've usually. I've learned some lessons, uh working in grants on on Jefferson here, and uh we've made adjustments to the bid um for Washington Bridge to ensure that um the 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 clay tropical soils are are not an issue. We're we'll deal with it with the contractor during construction without a major change order.
There's a highlight on the on Kimo, on the structural concrete class double E.
The 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 highlighted portions on the
On the Kimo?
On the bid tab, those are mistakes, so mathematical errors.
It has to be, cause it's about seven hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, um yeah, so that's a, yeah, so that's that's actually what uh Wilson's correction of their mistake. So they they uh filled out their their bid form and did the math, and we go back and we check it. And so those, the the yellow portion there, so that bid item for structural concrete number fourteen, um I don't know how we corrected it, but but their map was wrong. And then, so it changed their their overall amount. But since they're not the low bidder, then it doesn't impact um impact the award.
Well, it's like Compass came in fairly low, huh, Compass?
Yeah, a couple hundred thousand lower than our estimate.
Does this fit in with the award that we got um of state funding? Is that, is this amount below or within that spread?
Yeah, it's one point five million, right, Doc?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, we have one point five million, and that 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 includes the the CM portion for us, which was a hundred and fifty, so we're still below that funding amount.
Is that unusual?
Uh to well, it it's a it's it's surprising to to be under that much. It's usually tighter than that.
Compass Engineering on your mobilization, they're a hundred percent lower than the other bid. Or is it a hot con?
Uh that that's a, I I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's one or twenty thousand.
They they, I think they're actually in Milan right now. They're they're doing uh, I think they might be doing the Sand Street Bridge.
Well, really, that's why, I think.
I'm pretty sure that's why, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
That's a reason, cause when you see a bigger like that, I mean, you gotta question it.
Mm-hmm. No, that's that's true.
It's it's under budget, right, or uh a one point?
By what, by three hundred? Now, what uh what happens to, you said that there's one point five million already awarded to this project, and the bid comes in at one one million, one hundred and thirty-three, what happens to the rest of it?
Um that money stays with the state. Do we have to do a match even if we, the bids are under? Do we have a required match? Do you guys remember?
The the agreement's one point five, and the city's match is seventy-five. And the seventy-five is, that's per any activity on the agreement, so it stays at seventy-five, even though they with with construction management and this, we're at about thirteen-five. But there's always, I know people.
He doesn't wanna hear this.
But there's a good possibility of a change, a change order or two, and that gives us some wiggle room for a change order. A lot of times, we don't have no any wig, like the Jefferson project right now. I think we have like three thousand dollars of wiggle room on a two point five million dollar contract. So we we don't wanna get that tight again. There's been some headaches there. So in this one, we have some wiggle room, and I picked almost guaranteed. My, uh Donny don't wanna hear this, but there will be a change order or two. Hopefully not big ones, but it's just.
And our match doesn't change, so.
Correct.
Is there a possibility of it going over one point five?
Yes, well, the change order.
We will, I mean, in in the in the event we see a two hundred thousand dollar change order, we can, we'll we'll work with the contractor to to make it work.
Okay.
Write it down.
All right.
Thank you, Dan.
Any other questions? Make the motion for approval?
I make a motion we approve uh a bid from uh Compass Engineering Construction.
I'll second.
Okay, uh Councilor Dardik?
Yes.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes, sir.
And Councilor Pedia?
Yes.
Okay, Washington Avenue Bridge, kind of word, approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next item, Resolution twenty sixteen seventy-nine. That's CDBG application.
City manager, council, uh first of all, I have to thank you guys for taking the time out under Laura's instruction. We wanted to give you guys some more information, practice meetings on the projects. You don't, you guys probably don't feel comfortable making a million dollar decision on Monday. I have one also, so anyway, thank you guys for taking time out of your day. Uh better discussion, I think, at the meeting, which which is good, so anyway. Uh before your Resolution twenty sixteen seventy-nine, we've been going through the process for CDBG application, CDBG Community Development Block Grant. Uh it's involved several public hearings, choosing a project, that kinda thing. What made the most sense was uh Washington drainage, and really, the big factor there was uh we've already started on Jefferson, so that just continues that, and there'll be a new Maceville Elementary coming soon, so it just falls in mind. So it, even though with the available funding, we can't do a long stretch, we're also applying for DOT funding or other options for, to continue, because there's a limitation for CDBG funding. Anyway, the max amount's uh seven fifty for a full project, uh which we're going for. So the resolution just basically uh displays the council, the city's commitment in the project. You're aware of it, uh the scope, and the city's match of the of the of the overall cost. So in this case, it's uh seventy-five thousand or a slightly a little more with the full face project. Uh and actually, Brandon Howe, I believe, is on on the phone of the Northwest New Mexico Cog for case we have further discussion afterward. So anyway, um the application is due June eleventh. This is one of the last steps. Uh you guys showing your commitment, recognizing the amounts, recognizing the scope, recognizing the project, uh your support. The 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 numbers are there in front of you, the city's uh match on seventy-four, two sixty-four, or the uh seventy-five thousand. So anyway, the numbers are there. If this comes into fruition, say, we're approved, the application due June eleventh will be notified in July or August. And we probably won't see actual construction next year. Well, I think we only have two years on the CDBG, so it'll be for sure next year. So anyway, your support would be appreciated. I stand for any questions.
Yeah, can you explain more of the phase two um drainage project that we're looking at here?
Yeah, so we're on Jefferson now.
Mm-hmm.
Uh the Washington Bridge is getting done, and right there where it turns to Washington, there's a section that, where where the turn is actually, that's about what all of this funding will get done in regard to sidewalk, road, underground infrastructure, sewer, water, that, all that kinda stuff. I know it's not a long stretch, but that's why we're trying to tie in other available funding options such as DOT to go past that turning point. You know where that little arroyo is on the west side of the Family Center?
Mm-hmm.
This this funding will only take us from the corner of where the bridge turns to Washington to that corner. Three hundred and fifty linear feet or four hundred linear feet. So it's not a big stretch, but it's a it's a piece of the pie, and you know, with projects, we
Sure.
you know, we have to plan it.
That that includes like sewer, water, it all?
Correct. All a- and with CDBG, it has to be a a a complete project towards usable afterwards. So that's why we have to do everything in just that little stretch, cause we can't just put CDBG funding to the water.
Mm-hmm.
You know, cause you can't use it afterwards, cause the road won't be done in the sewer. You have to, it has to be usable, so we have to complete that little area in order to qualify for the for this funding. And from what I understand, the the applications are are, they're not very much this year, so uh there's a good chance that we get approved.
There also a good chance that it'll come online before the new school is built there?
That we're, that's what we're hoping for, cause the Maceville, I believe, was put on, I don't know, you guys may understand the funding for new schools better than I do, maybe Laura does, but I think you get on like a top ten list or something like that, but anyway, Maceville's up there, so they expect funding within like two, three years. But that that's funny, sort of take a year or two to go to construction. So if things fall in line, say this project gets completed in two, three years, and soon afterward, the school, or at that point, they should already be started. Started, but not, you know, too far.
So, so with San Ste Jefferson, the the bridge, the CBDG funding right there, does that take care of a lot of the drainage problems that the residents there have been experiencing forever?
Huge. Uh that's Jefferson Street before, there was a drainage pipe of this big, going across the road in that big old channel, going through Ronnie Pines' property. Anyway, the drainage there now is like a forty-eight inch
Yeah.
drainage under the road, so it's really huge upgrade. And then we got the pond in addition, gathering water from another area. Uh Donny could probably speak more to this than myself, he's the engineer, we've done all the work, but it it's a huge improvement. And all these projects, with the way grants is, they're they're all drainage projects. I mean, we get a new road, we get lighting and sidewalk and all that, but really, they're drainage projects.
Yeah, cause we don't have proper drainage around the whole city, so.
If you look at that Jefferson Street, it's amazing how low it is. It's almost like the street almost acts like a channel.
It does.
In the good rain.
Probably does, probably.
These are, yeah, it does, therefore.
Cool. While I make a motion that we approve this CBD Resolution twenty sixteen seventy-nine, CBDG grant application, so you can get the ball rolling on this one.
Any second?
I second it.
Councilor Pedia?
Yes.
Councilor Dardik?
Yes.
And Councilor Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Donald.
And Christopher.
I do wanna say real quickly, thank you to Donald uh this morning for taking the time. Sin Dong with Eric and I, and you know, they didn't just ask all the dumbest questions we can ask. And filling us in, and we get a little bit more informed on on these projects. Thank you, Donald.
He did.
Yeah?
He sat down with me.
No?
He sat down with me. All right, next item, uh cemetery price and increase discussion.
Okay, y'all, excuse me, go ahead, Doc. I had a a lot of people calling me, that there's a lot of people coming from outside of the city to get buried here. And then when I was at the, before I became a city council, I was at the cemetery board. And I remember when we made that that area right now, uh what's that section right there, in the middle?
In the middle?
Uh right there, where
I think it's a
D, D.
D or E, yeah.
It was supposed to be last for a long time, so we, I don't know where the money came from, I get from grants and stuff like that. We extended up to F, up on top of the hill, and that little green area coming down from Mesa, and then both sides. And we fenced it, we fenced all that area. It cost us four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars for everything. And I don't know who the engineer was at the time, but there's a quite a few flaws that we have seen. I don't know if you guys are worried, but it's gonna take me a while to explain, but uh right now, we are burying people. Go, I may have said you that, right? Because of the areas all the way to the to the apartments. And uh pretty soon, we're not gonna have any any real estate. So what I'm proposing, you guys got a copy of this, the out-of-county resident pays twenty-four hundred dollars. I recommend we go up three thousand dollars for that one.
To twenty-eight, is that what you're saying?
The 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 out-of-county resident, I'll wait, it's twenty-four hundred now?
Yeah.
We go up to three thousand.
Oh, three thou- five, five hundred more?
Five hundred more, three thousand dollars total, I'm sorry, for it.
Oh, okay.
And leave the like the open and closed standard plot, the same thing. The only thing that will change from the twenty-five will be three grand. And then I was talking to Senator Winters, he's the, he's the county commissioner, and he says that up in Bluewater, the Pioneer Cemetery there, they're charging a thousand dollars. And they're going fast, he said, that's what most of them are coming for here too. So, and the county does not help us at all, I don't think, with uh with our costs, and we have to pay Jacobs quite a bit of money to for upkeep. And if you go out down to uh some of the other cemeteries, they don't help, we can look at green grass and uh trees and paved roads and stuff like that.
Very well kept.
And we have to pay for it. So I just recommend on the civil county resident, from eight hundred to a thousand, we'll pay two hundred dollars more for out of county. We don't, the city stays the same for everything else.
And the out-of-county residents for twenty-five?
Civil county resident will be a thousand, and then the out-of-county, uh out-of-county resident, twenty-five hundred to three thousand.
No changes on the child?
No. I don't, I don't, I don't want.
Either one of the childs either.
No, just the adults. We're paying, uh I had the list here, you gave it to me, oh, oh, here, I'm sorry. We had a the clerk gave me, eighteen plots sold to city residents the last six months, three plots to county residents, six plots to out-of-county residents. You know, that's, that's, that's cause like I, what I was taking into account was Jacobs, because we pay him quite a bit of money. Water, we pay water, we have to, as a matter of fact, Laura is not on the subject, but the subject of that, they're gonna have to manage it better on the on the watering. They flood that center once a while, you know, they say they're monitoring the justice breakers or something.
Yeah, we talked with them this week, we're uh put out a directive to um slow down the watering on all parks.
That's right. So our more frequently used parks, we're gonna water twice a week for twenty minutes each water, and our And our less water, uh, used parks, once a week. And we're, we're, uh, mixing some parks, like the East End Triangle, some that don't get any public use.
Yeah, because right now, they, they, they gotta set for two o'clock in the morning or something like that. And they shut off at probably five or six o'clock, you go there at that time of day, and it's awful. You see what we do.
Let me ask you another question. Um, now that out-of-county resident, three thousand dollars, now that's, that's for a a, well, full burial, right? Because isn't it different for someone that, that is cremated, they just get a smaller sections of?
You're right, they can get a, an iron block.
An iron block, okay.
An iron block. But most of these people buy a regular block just for the night?
Are we, we're gonna, we're not, we're not gonna make any changes on that?
Well, let's just go to one line, I haven't thought about that, but.
Are we?
We have an iron, an iron section on the west side of the cemetery.
You know what it's gonna be.
And how much activity do we get there? Do you know more?
Very little.
Very new?
Right.
Do we have, we, they don't bury them, they don't wanna, they want a big one over here. Then they can do either one, but they, but they, they can bury one person in a plot. And then they can bury, let's say, every other person in a casket. And they can put furms on top. That's the, the rules right now. So, so do you guys?
Well, I agree with you, Fred. I think we should make, uh, those two changes. I make a, uh, I make a motion that we approve the civil county residence from eight hundred to a thousand. And the out-of-county residence from twenty-five hundred to three thousand.
Any second?
Okay. Counsel Pena?
Yes.
Counsel Alarca?
Yes.
Counsel Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Those changes are approved. Okay, next item, number ten, budget cuts.
So you should all have a sheet that looks like this, that I wrote some notes.
I lost it, it's very clear.
We have it. Okay, um, we're looking at budget cuts, uh, probably this rest, the remainder of this fiscal year. In the month of March, our gross receipts was about half of what we typically bring in. It was down about two hundred and seventy-five thousand, so that's a big hit to this year's budget. We have implemented a hiring freeze and are not filling several vacant positions of people that have been retiring or that left. We have about, I would say, five positions that people vacated. And then we put a freeze on any purchasing, uh, items that could wait. So we're trying to encourage departments to hold off on things that could wait for, you know, a year or, or so. And then we're looking at possible furloughs across the board. Um, I was a little disappointed, though, in, in calculating, Kimberly helped us calculate what one day's furlough would be worth. And if every staff member that works for the city took one day furlough, we would be saving twenty thousand dollars. So, um, that's not a big, a big change or a big help. And then for the next fiscal year, starting July one, we're, we're projecting a thirty percent reduction in revenue, at least starting out. We're hoping things are gonna turn around soon. We would continue our hiring freeze, cut back on any projects like paving, lights, sidewalk blocks, et cetera, that could wait. Um, I wanna know, do you want to cut the fireworks show? We spend twenty thousand on fireworks. Uh, we're talking about possible furloughs if needed, possible layoffs. One position, um, that makes fifteen dollars and sixty-seven cents per hour would save approximately fifty to sixty thousand dollars. Then that's looking at a year's worth if we laid off. Funding for outside agencies beyond lodgers tax that are slated for reduction. So, um, I put down some outside groups that we fund, Main Street Economic Development, the Transit, Jacobs Contract. Most of those have been told their funding's gonna be cut by thirty percent, um, even Jacobs. And so we're working with them to lower their scope. But, um, something we'll need to consider, you know, everything's really up in the air, we don't know how things are gonna pan out. I'm hoping now that we're starting to open up, that things are gonna turn around real quick. Um, Councilor Garcia is noting that many of the businesses are actually doing pretty good. The ones that have been able to stay open, their businesses increased, and I've heard that also. So we're, um, we're hoping April's GRT might not be quite as drastic as March, just because people got stimulus checks. And because we may be having others coming in from outside of our county to shop. And I believe more locals are shopping local rather than going to Albuquerque. But, um, you know, a couple of things, do we wanna mix the fireworks show? Uh, do we need to cut more from the outside funding that we do? And my recommendation's gonna be that we try to avoid layoffs. And I was on a, a call today with others across the state, and that seems to be the Senator Udall was on there, and he was recommending that we try to avoid layoffs, because layoffs are gonna cause further devastation. More people not working, and then they're not able to, you know, spend money, and, um, they'll start cutting back more. So if we could avoid laying people off, that would be great. But we're just kinda preparing that two hundred and seventy-five thousand just from March is really a big hit to our budget this year.
How many people you haven't, uh, filled positions since this has happened?
I would say there's about five positions. Um, Mark, Mark took the biggest hit, I think he had some that left. He had three, just one in the pipes, two on the street.
Five, five total in two months that we have filled, in just my area.
Just your department.
Right.
So, how long can you be sustainable without the people compared to you're saying that we're, let's say, five people, that's fifty thousand a year. We're at second quarter, so you're looking at thirty-eight thousand times five, almost two hundred thousand dollars if you don't replace those people. But how long can you be sustainable?
Counselor, it depends on what kind of projects that those departments are, are slated to do, right? If you're expecting full, full-time paving projects, obviously, that's not very realistic. Um, as far as Laura and I have, have talked, if there is a reduction of scope from Jacobs, what could some of the departments pull together and under the umbrella of public works? I think we could pull, pull some areas off that, and, and just try to consolidate. Sorry. We would consolidate as best as possible, and it's, it's one of those things in a tough economic time. You, you just kinda have to evaluate what's important. So we cut back on watering, fully anticipating to, uh, have to cut the grass less, have to be on the grass less in response. And so there's some areas where we can, obviously, uh, after next week, no more paving. So, yeah, uh, I, I hope that answers your question. How, okay.
Now, is there room, uh, for like shifting, uh, workers from one area to another?
There is. Everyone's gonna have to wear at least a hat and a hat. And so, uh, I've already addressed all my people, and I imagine across the board, uh, there's gonna be some memos that are put out. Uh, that'll be Laura and, and, you know, tightening, tightening the belt, so to speak. Uh, maybe, uh, just for an example, someone from the streets department, they're gonna have to jump on a mower and, uh, jump on a weed eater. And it just, just to make things work for the time being, yeah.
Yeah, we'll do a lot of cross, cross work. Uh, Mark and I were talking, you know, what could we do with the pipe crew, because we're trying to cut down on supplies. So, uh, right now, he's got them started cleaning manholes and sewer lines, which is more manpower rather than materials. The street department, we're having them clean ditches and the alleys and paint curbs, which is not a high expense compared to paving. So we're looking at how can we utilize our current staff and with minimal materials.
So, if we don't replace these positions by the end of the year, if you don't replace these positions now, you're gonna be saving almost two hundred thousand, right? So furloughs, I mean, it's.
That's only as a last resort, right, furloughs and layoffs?
Yes.
Well, we don't, you're just trying to inform us now, or are you trying to approve a budget cut right now?
No, I'm, I'm just informing you. I think I'd like to know the fireworks for sure. Um, I don't know what your opinion is. Um, do we wanna blow up twenty thousand dollars in the air for fifteen minutes, or?
What kind of attendance do we get on them?
We, we get a high attendance. Um, typically, people were going out to the golf course. We were shooting fireworks off at the golf course, and people went out there, and there was a live band and, or a DJ. And people parked in cars, or some could watch from their homes. So, um, it is something highly watched. Um, I know I, in years past, I thought we could combine with Sky City. Sky City has really a pretty spectacular, we pay twenty thousand, I bet theirs is fifty thousand, double or triple what ours is. And some people from Grants do go out there, but I don't know if we could encourage that, or, you know, with, um, so many hotspots in our county and neighbors, you, you know, we may still not be doing mass gatherings anyway. But, um, it'll be getting close to time to sign a contract with the fireworks company. So I'm just kinda, I know the mayor is very pro fireworks, and even when we've had fire restrictions, he's wanted fireworks. So I didn't know what, how the rest of you feel. Um, I don't know if we're gonna be, you know, we had to do a furlough, or are people gonna be mad, like, well, why are they paying for fireworks? When we, we did, you know, had to go a day without working.
Well, I'm kind of inclined in, uh, in keeping it, because sometimes, uh, an event like that is something people look forward to. And now that everybody's been locked up for, for the last couple of months, and you give them something to kind of relieve a little bit of stress, you know, like going out to the golf course. Um, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, it's, I think it's, it's beneficial for the, for the morale of the city, I think, in my opinion.
Yeah, it might be duly, you know, needed after so much, um, down, that it's something, let's celebrate, you know, the fourth.
Yeah. A lot of favor of keeping it, though.
Okay, well, yeah, we can afford it.
Okay, and if, what about, um, the outside agencies that we fund, are you good with trying to at least? Um, I felt like they should at least take the same cut that our departments are taking, but and then, of course, if, if things pick up and things are better, then we can reevaluate mid-year and say, hey, you know, we've got an abundance of dollars, let's, um.
Can we just do that?
We, we could. We can adjust our budget anytime during the year to accommodate our, our own departments or outside groups as well.
I'll agree to that.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good.
Does that what you recommend on this outside community building?
Yes, that's pretty much a thirty percent cut, like our departments are taking.
What did Jacobs?
Um, they, they were disappointed, but I think they probably anticipated that might be coming.
How does that work with the Jacobs, because they have a contract, so what do you credit them?
So we'll have to sit with them and decide which components of the contract that they won't be doing in order to cut. It's close to five hundred thousand that's getting cut from theirs.
That's correct.
So that means the city picks up that end, right?
Exactly.
So that's where Mark was talking, it sounds like they're wanting to give us the parks part. Would be the component they wanna possibly turn over. So that might be, you know, our street crew or our pipe crew might have to help with watering and, you know, adjusting sprinklers or helping mow, those kind of things.
You, you say that they want to give us the parks permanently?
I bet they do, but, um, yeah, but for now, for sure, yeah.
When is their whole contract done?
Um, I believe we have three more years, three to four more years.
Right, but there's a, there's a two-year break, and that, that's up in July. And so whatever adjustments are going to be made by the council need to be made before the Ju- July.
They've reached, they've reached something.
Are the, uh, the equipment for the parks, is that ours?
Correct, the city owns all that equipment.
Okay.
Any other thoughts on, or suggestions?
Do you have enough people for the, if we have to take over the parks, or?
The area of concern, if, if I'm being honest, is the cemetery. Um, sometimes the cemetery requires a little more care than, than some of the other parks. If, if some of the edges aren't trimmed on a park side, I don't think there's.
Pretty sure nobody's gonna complain.
Right. But, uh, the cen- the cemetery, yeah, if you bury someone in the wrong spot, could be bad.
Well, I'd like to see if we can do anything to, um, not go down the furlough or layoffs.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Um, I think these, these cuts are in line to help us do that. So do we need to prove this?
Yeah.
This is just for information.
For information.
Okay. Any, uh, any comments, uh?
Uh, comment, uh, took the opportunity this morning to meet with Donald. And, uh, you know, I had mentioned to Laura, uh, a holdback that, um, you know, I'm newly elected, you know, and Eric. And, uh, so basically, we're catching up on a lot of, of stuff that's been going on for a timeframe. And so, you know, I'd like to see something built into the agenda to where we could have, like, maybe big budget items that require a lot of discussion to be put in as a discussion item rather than action items, so that we can become better educated and informed. And so when we come to make a decision on, on a particular item, then, uh, we know, we know what we're talking about. You know, I was very appreciative of Donald this morning, because, you know, he, he gave us a really good explanation of three budget items for tonight, which gave me a really good understanding of what, what we're talking about. And rather than, than us coming to the meeting and having to discuss that particular, particular item, and I'm not completely informed on it, but I'm, but we're having to be forced to make a decision. And if we had just a discussion item, then we know we can even think about it a little bit more and, um, and then make a decision that's, or we're better informed, put it that way.
So I'll have Donald and Mark typically are the ones that have those big-ticket items. If you all will help me to make sure we, we plan it out far enough, that we schedule a discussion first. And then maybe the next meeting, we could, uh, have a vote on it. If things are very time-sensitive, you could do like you did this session, these two items tonight. I, I understood they were gonna be time-sensitive so that we could get the construction going before winter. So, um, they took the time to meet with you ahead, but it'll be better if we have some kind of formal presentation during the meetings. Uh, the meeting before we actually take a vote, so if you all will help us do that.
Work session?
Yes.
Are we, are we, are you still talking about having like, uh, uh, big-ticket items as, as work, as work session material? But other items that are smaller items as action items?
Yes.
Combined in the same meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we could do both, and if that doesn't work, then we could look at, you know, a different structuring where we have a formal work session always. Uh, but if we combine both, then we could probably, uh, take care of both needs.
Okay.
Yeah.
Eric, you got any? No. Fred?
Good, thank you.
Uh, I have a couple. When, uh, we talked about, you know, paving, is that including those speed humps or bumps? I've had a request for one.
The, the, uh, speed bumps are generally taken care of by the planning and zoning, but generally, they cost about three thousand dollars. I, I wouldn't call that a big-ticket item.
Yeah, well, it's probably something that can wait, but, you know, as things get better, but, uh, it was brought up to my attention.
And, and maybe they put it through the planning and zoning process, and then it's, it's on the shelf, ready to go.
Okay.
So the way it works is that, um, individuals that wanna speed hump get a petition from the planning and zoning, and they get their neighbors to sign it. And a certain percentage has to sign, and then it goes before planning and zoning. And they look at the, the request and decide if it's a good idea. Sometimes they ask for a traffic study from our police department, but.
But with the speed bumps though, they're not the old speed bumps, because I know people on Facebook, they're like, oh, speed bumps, speed bumps, but these are better engineered speed bumps, because you did one on Boston, right?
That's right.
And that was pretty nice.
Yeah, and we just completed that for the council, uh, we filled in, because they, they build them like Legos, so you can build them in a couple of different humps, or now we put it all the way across.
Uh, the other item is, um, I know it's been crossed out, LED lighting, um, the, uh, solar. And, you know, I get it as far as, uh, you know, maybe not budgeting for those for maybe a few months. But is that, is something, as, as things get more improved in our economy and our community, is that something that we can revisit?
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, there's some areas that definitely need to be relit in some of the streets and, you know, Mesa's one of them.
Right. How do you think those lights are turning out, by the way, Counselor?
They seem to be working well.
Right.
Yeah.
The foliage, uh, it was as advertised, I think.
Yeah, no.
He said that the leaves wouldn't really bother it. I think it happens.
Yeah. And that's all I have. So, any else? I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I second.
Anybody say aye?
Aye.
Let's go.